Okay, can start.
Welcome, everyone. This is duly advertised meeting of the Joliet Zoning Board of Appeals. In our capacity, we hear petitions for relief from the strict provisions of our city audiences. In matters of this type, the decision of the board is final in respect that it does not go to the mayor or city council for further action. However, if you disagree with our decision, you have recourse in the court of record. We also hear petitions for variations of land use. In matters of this type, we act as advisory committee to the mayor and city council, making a recommendation either for or against it. The final decision on land use is made by the mayor and the city council. Please call the roll.
Ms. Safer?
Here.
Mr. Lassio? Mr. McShane?
Here.
Mr. Noctree?
Here.
Mr. Riggs?
Here.
Ms. Rohr?
Here.
Mr. Hennessy?
Hey, can we have an approval of the last month's minutes?
So move.
Motion? Second? I'll second it, I guess. No one else is here from the last one. You want to call the roll for it?
Ms. Safer?
Aye.
Mr. McShane?
Aye.
Mr. Noctree?
Have to abstain. I wasn't here.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Rohr?
Abstain.
Next order of business would be citizens to be heard on agenda items. This is anyone wanting to speak regarding items listed on the agenda. Know that you will have time when each petition is called, but if there's anybody that would like to speak on agenda items, you can do so now. Seeing none, we can move on to old business for public hearing. We have none on the agenda under that topic. Under new business for public hearing, if you don't mind, I would like to call 2022-47 out of order. This is the sign variation request for 2211 West Jefferson Street. That is for the cannabis dispensary that's being proposed there. That was not, there was no motion for that use at city council on Tuesday, so it's kind of in limbo right now. So this needs to be tabled until that is figured out, at least one month to the September 15th ZBA meeting.
Motion to table?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. McShane?
Aye.
Mr. Noctree?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Ms. Rohr?
Aye.
Ms. Safer?
Aye.
First order of business then is petition number 2022-46. The applicant owner is Yulania Guerrero. Location is 1013 Charlesworth Avenue. Request is a variation. Under purpose, the applicant is requesting a variation to increase the maximum allowed lot coverage from 30% to 34% to allow the construction of a detached garage located at 1013 Charlesworth Avenue. Zoning Board of Appeals makes the final decision on this variation request. Under site-specific information, the property in question is a 4,609 square foot lot that contains a two-story home built around 1910. There's an existing driveway along the south side of the house and an 18-foot by 18-foot carport over a concrete pad at the back of the property. Lot is 35 feet wide, which is less than the width of most lots in the surrounding area. In 2004, the zoning board approved a variation to reduce the side yard setback from five feet to two feet to allow the construction of a 240 square foot addition to the existing home. Property is Zoned R2 Single Family Residential. Under surrounding zoning land use and character, the property is located on northeast area neighborhood, in the northeast area neighborhood. Surrounding area is made up of single-family residential homes with some two-unit residences. Other lots on the block have a similar layout to the subject property with a detached garage at the rear of the property. The zoning and land use for the adjacent properties are as follows. To the north is R2 Single Family, two, two, um, single-family residences. To the south is R2 Single Family with a single-family residence. To the east is R3, one and two-family residential, and there's a railroad right away. To the west is R2 Single Family Residential, and there's a single-family residence there. Under applicable regulations, section 47, 17.29, percentage of ground coverage, and section 47-19.8, findings of facts supporting a variation, and you can refer to the attachment. Under discussion, the property owner is seeking to build a 24-by-24 detached garage at the rear of their property. The lot currently contains a 16 and a half foot by 45-foot two-story home with a covered rear patio and no garage. In the southwest corner of the lot is the proposed location for the new garage. There is an 18-foot by 18-foot carport, which will be removed. Existing lot coverage is 29%. With the proposed garage, lot coverage would be 34%. Zoning ordinance allows no more than 30% of ground area of a residential lot to be covered by structures. Therefore, the homeowner is requesting a variation to increase their lot coverage to 34% in order to construct the proposed garage. There's an existing asphalt driveway along the south side of the house, which will be extended to the new garage. The proposed garage will meet the setback requirements for detached garages. A plot of survey and example elevation are attached, and that concludes our staff report. We have no conditions on this one.
Is the petitioner present? If you'd like to come up and get us where you're in? Do you wish us, do you, do you swear your statements to be true?
Yes, sir.
Can you name an address for the board?
Juliana Guerrero. Uh, address is 1013 Charlesworth Avenue in July.
Do you have any questions or comments for the board?
Besides, I would, you know, uh, I would like to build a two-car garage. If we go anything smaller, I wouldn't be able to fit two cars. Um, I mean, I feel like that's the basic nowadays, the two-car garage. Um, my house is already paid off. Um, I have no intentions on selling it, so I would like to increase the value of the home. I'd like to, um, improve the neighborhood and, um, I have, um, it's my husband and myself, so we both have a vehicle, and we would like to just, um, make a two-car garage.
Okay, is there anyone to speak in favor of it? Is there anyone opposing it? Is there any questions for the board?
I would move we approve.
I second that.
Motion approved and seconded. Please call the board.
Mr. McShane?
Aye.
Mr. Noctree?
Aye.
Ms. Rohr? Aye.
Ms. Safer?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Sonia, are the microphones on?
Yes.
Okay. We did not hear the petitioner very well.
Yeah, it should be on. Yeah, it's on.
Clean my ears. Okay.
Next agenda item is 2022-48. Applicant is Eddie Hartzell, signed contractor. The owner is First Assembly of God Church. Location is 1741 Essington Road. Request is a series of variations on signage. Uh, the petitioner, who is a signed contractor for the property owner, requests several variations on signage to allow the replacement of existing monument sign with an electronic message center with larger signage. And this is again located at 1741 Essington Road. ZBA makes the final decision for these variance requests. Variance requests include a variance to allow an illuminated ground sign for a church in residential zoning district, variance to increase the total sign area for all ground signs on the property, and a variance to increase the permitted sign height to 12 feet four inches. Site, uh, specific information, the subject property is 36 acres in size. First Assembly of God Church has been located here since 1986. The property is Zoned R2 Single Family Residential. The church's main entrance is on Essington Road, just north of Theodore Street. There's a secondary entrance on Theodore Street, just west of Lakewood Drive. Under case history, the Zoning Board of Appeals approved variance requests on signage for this property three times since the church was built in 1986. In 86, there was a variation of maximum allowable signage from 12 square feet to 60 square feet, a variation of major street setback from 80 to 54 from center line. In 1992, a variation of maximum sign area from 12 square feet to 72 square feet, variation to allow a secondary illuminated sign on Theodore Street. In 2009, there was also a variation to allow a 32-square-foot electronic message center to replace a manual message center atop the existing monument sign. Under surrounding zoning land use and character, to the north is R2 Single Family with single-family residential homes in the Warwick subdivision. To the south is R2 Single Family Residential. There's single-family residential homes here, and that's Autumn Lake South subdivision. To the east is B3 General Business with a variety of commercial uses. To the west is R2 Single Family Residential, and there's single-family homes in the Autumn Lake Estates subdivision. Applicable regulations, 47, 17-21 signs, 47-17-213BB, criteria for granting a sign variation, and you can refer to the attachment. In a residential zoning district, the zoning ordinance, this is under discussion, in a residential zoning district, the zoning ordinance does not allow illuminated ground signs, limits total sign area for all ground signs to 12 square feet. Petitioner acting on behalf of First Assembly of God Church seeks to replace the existing monument sign that includes an existing 32-square-foot electronic message center located at the church's Essington Road entrance with a new sign that includes a 50-square-foot electronic message center, 21-square-foot illuminated top cabinet, and a 20-square-foot non-illuminated lower cabinet. Total proposed sign area for this replacement sign, including the 50-square-foot electronic message center, is 91 square feet. City limits signs in a residential zoning district to 11-foot in height, so the petitioner also requests a variance to increase the permitted height to 12-foot four. Proposed sign will maintain the setbacks of the existing monument sign. The church is not proposing to modify the existing manual message center monument sign that is located at its secondary entrance on Theodore Street at this time. Should the zoning board approve the proposed modified sign, total sign area for the property would be 126 square feet of signage, including the existing Theodore Street sign. Under conditions, we have none, and that concludes our staff report.
Mr. Hartzell? Do you swear your statement to be true?
Yes.
Can we please state your name and address?
Eddie Hartzell Jr., 22312 Camelot Court, Shorewood, Illinois 60404.
Any questions or comments for the board?
Um, no, just that this facility, they're, they're rebranding, and so they had me come up with a new design for their sign to replace the existing, and this is what I'm proposing.
Okay. Does anyone speak in favor for the petition? Anyone opposed? Any questions from the board?
I have a question. Um, just looking at the, at the map from, from above, it looks like there are residences fairly close on the Essington side to your entrance. Do you know offhand what the distance is between where the sign will be and where that housing development?
I don't know specifically what the distance is. Um, I do know there was a variance, and there has been a, a message center there for at least 10 years.
Not as big, however.
And, and so we're going, I'm going, it's not as big. I'm going a little bit shorter and taller, and, but it's going to have the same dimming features, and they're going to follow the same protocol that, that they follow now.
I see. So in other words, it'll, it'll dim down at night?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And, and I've done a lot of these signs around the, uh, been involved with a lot around the city, and, um, it's never been a problem at night as far as when it dims down.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I'll close it and ask for a vote.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second approved. Call the board.
Mr. Noctree?
Aye.
Ms. Rohr?
Aye.
Ms. Safer?
Aye.
Mr. McShane?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item under consideration is 2022-49. The applicant is Chris Swan. Status of the applicant is the owner. Owner again is Chris Swan. Location, 2025 North Broadway Street. Request is a variation. Uh, under purpose, the petitioner is requesting the following variation from the city zoning ordinance to allow construction of a new 108-square-foot front porch at 2025 North Broadway Street. Reduction in front yard setback from Broadway Street is 30 feet to, from 30 feet to 15 foot 10 inches, and that's section 47101. Site-specific information, the subject property is approximately 0.2 acres in the Zone B3 General Business, but contains a single-family residence. Petitioner wishes to build a new front porch, which would be approximately 15 foot 10 inches away from the front lot line at its closest point. The front entrance of the house is currently accessed by six, six-foot-wide concrete stairs with two iron handrails on each side of the stairs. Both the concrete stairs and iron handrails are weathered and in need of replacement. Surrounding zoning land use and character, to the north is B3 Single Family Residential, to the south is B3 Commercial, to the east is B3 Single Family Residential, to the west is R2 Single Family Residential. Applicable regulations, section 47131, permitted principal uses, B3 zoning district, section 47-10.1, permitted principal uses are B restricted business, section 47-71, permitted principal uses are three, one and two-family residential, section 47-51, permitted principal uses are one, single-family residential, section 47-19.8, criteria for granting a variation, and you could refer to the attachment. Under discussion, the approval of the requested variation would allow the construction of the new 108-square-foot front porch at 1225 North Broadway Street with a 15-foot 10-inch front yard setback. Conceptual sketches of the proposed front porch have been included in the staff report packet. Width of the stairs leading up to the front porch will remain six feet wide. Porch will be approximately 21 foot eight inches by five feet in size. Section 47-10.1 of the zoning ordinance allows those uses permitted as of right, and section 47-7, provided the uses conform to the area bulk and other district regulations in which the uses are typically located. Single-family residential uses are permitted uses in the B3 zone, but must conform to the area bulk and other district regulations. Be more typical, single-family residential zones such as the R1 or R2 zones. Both zones, front yard setback requirement is 30 feet. Finding out facts needed to support the requested variation is outlined in section 4719.8 of the city code, establishes a practical difficulty that warrants the requested variation. Subject property is located on a pre-existing lot that only contains approximately 25 feet to 30 feet of front yard setback distance. Without the variation, there could be no legal non-conforming accessory structure placed within the front yard setback area. Furthermore, the attached photos show that several other properties in the area have front porches, similar to the proposed front porch the petitioner wishes to build. Staff finds that the proposed front porch will not be out of character with the surrounding area, that unique circumstances exist to the, exist due to the lot constraints. Under conditions, if the zoning board desires to approve the requested variation, the following conditions would be included. One, construction of the new front porch will follow all applicable buildings, city, state, national building codes, and that concludes our staff report.
May I swear again? Do you swear your statement to be true?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Christopher Swan, 1225 North Broadway, Joliet, Illinois.
Do you have any questions or comments for the board?
Uh, no, just I'd like to replace that nasty concrete and put something that's more attractive and somewhere you can actually sit in the front.
Okay. Does anyone wish to speak in favor of this petition? Anyone opposed? Well, I guess we'll close the petition. Is there any questions from the board? If not?
I move we approve. I move we approve.
Second? Please call the roll.
Ms. Rohr?
Aye.
Ms. Safer?
Aye.
Mr. McShane?
Aye.
Mr. Noctree?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Next order of business is petition number 2022-50. The applicant is Illinois Rock and Roll Museum on Route 66. They are also the owner. Location is 9 West Cass Street. Request is a series of variations on signage. Uh, under purpose, the petitioner requests variations on signage for a future museum. And the Zoning Board of Appeals makes the final decision for these variance requests, which include a variance to increase maximum sign height from 20 feet to 37 feet six inches for a 24-foot tall by nine-foot wide sculpture, a variance to allow an on-premise sign that exceeds 200 square feet in area, a variance to increase the total sign area for the property from 50 square feet to 860.6 square feet. Site-specific information, the subject property is approximately 5,280 square feet in its Zone B2 Central Business District. The three-story white terracotta building faces south on West Cass Street. The circa 1930 building is a well-preserved example of late boar style, Sylvan-esque style, commercial building. The Joliet City Council designated this property. The White Store is a local historic landmark on August 4th, 2020. At their July 27th, 2022 meeting, the Joliet Historic Preservation Commission issued a certificate of appropriateness to allow the museum to hang the proposed sculpture on the front facade. Typical of commercial buildings of this era, property has zero-foot front and side yard setbacks. There is an alley that runs along the western facade of the building as well as northern rear property line. There is a, there is currently a tree directly in front of the building and at the location of the proposed sculpture. City Arbors has confirmed that the existing tree can be replaced with smaller ornamental tree. The White Store opened in 1930 at this location. By 1937, the White Store had outgrown the space at 9 West Cass Street, and the business moved around the corner to the building at 235 White, uh, 235 North Chicago Street, which was the building most people remember as the White Store. After the White Store relocated, the Goldblatt Brothers Department Store took over the building, using it as an annex to their store across the street into the late 1950s. Building then changed hands several times. In 2019, the Illinois Rock and Roll Museum on Route 66 purchased the property and is currently renovating the building for a museum. Under surrounding zoning land use and character, this building and property is in the heart of downtown Joliet. Central Business District, B2 zoning surrounds the property on all four sides. Property is surrounded by a mix of entertainment, retail office, and institutional uses. Under applicable regulations, 47-17.21 signs, 4717.213BB, criteria for granting a sign variation, and again, you can refer to that attachment. Under discussion, the Illinois Rock and Roll Museum on Route 66 seeks three variations on signage for their future museum. First two variance requests are related to the installation of a non-illuminated 213.6 square-foot fiberglass guitar sculpture that is approximately 25 feet tall and nine feet wide at the location where the previous large projecting sign had hung. Base of the sculpture will start at 13 feet six inches off the ground and will rise to a final height of 37 feet six inches off the ground. City limits on premise signs to, the city limits on premise signs to a maximum of 200 square feet, limit sign placement to 20 feet in height in the B2 district. Therefore, the petitioner requests approval of these two variances. Specifications and narrative on the proposed sculpture can be found as an attachment. The third variance request is to increase the total amount of signage for the property. Single-tenant properties in the B2 are limited to 50 square feet in signage. The museum proposes 860.6 square feet of signage for the property, including a 213.6 square-foot non-illuminated fiberglass guitar sculpture and 642 square feet of non-illuminated window lettering and graphics on first-floor storefront windows, five square feet of non-illuminated awning lettering and graphics. Museum contends that the window graphics will keep damaging UV rays off the future exhibits, as well as hide the museum contents for security. Some of the window graphics have been installed. The attached photos depict the existing and proposed location of the window graphics. Under conditions, we have none, and that concludes our staff report.
Is the petitioner present? Will he just be talking?
Yes.
I swear again. Do you swear your statement to be true?
Yes.
Please state your name and addresses for the record.
Ron Romero, Executive Director of the Illinois Rock and Roll Museum, live here in Joliet on 2911 Reardon Drive.
Jim Murphy, Board Member of the Illinois Rock and Roll Museum on Route 66, residence of 1422 Tiger Lily Lane, Joliet.
Do you have any questions or comments for the board?
None other than, uh, when you say the numbers, it sounds like quite a bit that we're covering, but as stated, the purpose of covering those windows are all clear glass windows. Uh, I'm sure they're probably original to the, to the building, or at least many, many years to them. So, um, the photos that you see on the building there is an example. Um, they're not necessarily very bright, but kind of, uh, the photos that are on there, um, uh, kind of opaque, uh, so that's not standing out as much. We try to keep a tasteful on what's there. So you can, like in the blue sections, there's photos of people there that are musicians of Illinois, uh, but they're not really outstanding in that, in that case. That's pretty much it. And we, you know, we, from the photos that you saw, what you see here, and from the artist renderings, uh, you see that we want to keep the building pretty much consistent. We're not changing anything in the facade or doing anything like that. The, the sign or the, um, the sculpture, the guitar sculpture is being created by somebody who has done stuff for, um, in Liverpool for the Cavern Club and for the Hard Days Night Hotel, for the, um, also for, um, uh, the Rock and Roll Museum or Hall of Fame in Cleveland, uh, very well-known artist in the community. And, uh, it's been a very good project, I think, for the city. We've been receiving a lot of really good support from a lot of the trade unions and companies helping out and donating their time, materials, and labor, uh, to bring this museum to fruition. So we're very thankful for that as well.
Does anyone here wish to speak in favor of the petition? Please come up. I swear again. Do you swear your statement to be true?
I do.
Please go ahead and, your name?
My name is Bill Dimitrios. I'm, uh, here. My residence is 2219 Preston Lake Court in Plainfield, Illinois 60586. I'm the owner of Arcas Restaurant Group. We own three restaurants in downtown area, two on the west side of Joliet as well. And I want to say I'm in favor for the Illinois Rock and Roll Museum. It's a great asset for the downtown. They do amazing job in the sign. It's part of, of their identity. I think it's very important, and, uh, it's a great attraction for tourists for the downtown area. Thank you.
Anyone else for? Swear you in for your statements to be true?
Yes.
Go ahead and do your name and address for the board.
Debbie Joey Erickson and I live at 1218 Taylor Street in Joliet. My specialty over the last 10 more years has been in Illinois tourism, specifically to Route 66. And I do know that this particular sign will be an icon that will surround the world in memorabilia with tourists, bringing a lot of tourists to the city of Joliet. Uh, familiar if you are all with the Gemini Giant down in Wilmington, or the mural, which is in Pontiac. Um, those particular icons are known worldwide through the Route 66 travelers, and I do believe that this particular sculpture will encompass that and bring everyone to the city of Joliet and build that tourism. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Jim Murphy, Board Member. I just, uh, hope that you can support this iconic sign that would be a nice addition to several already iconic signs in downtown Joliet with the Rialto Marquee, the Route 66 Museum sign. Uh, it just would be a wonderful addition to already successful iconic signs in the downtown area.
Okay, with that, does anyone wish to speak in opposition of the petition? And I don't see anyone at all, so we'll close that and ask if there's any questions from the board.
Motion to approve.
Motion second to approve. Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Safer?
Aye.
Mr. McShane?
Aye.
Mr. Noctree?
Aye.
Ms. Rohr?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye.
Next agenda item is petition number 2022-51. The applicant is Partners Personnel Management Services LLC. The owner is 224 Larkin LLC. Location is 232 South Larkin Avenue. Request is a special use permit. Under purpose, the petitioner is requesting a special use permit to allow a staffing company to be located in a tenant space at 232 South Larkin Avenue. Zoning ordinance requires a special use permit to allow temporary employment agencies in the business zoning districts. The zoning ordinance defines temporary employment agencies as entities engaged in the business of securing or attempting to secure employment of a temporary or a finite duration for persons seeking employment. Mayor and city council make the final decision on the special use request with the advice of the zoning board of appeals in accordance with section 47-5.2. Site-specific information, the subject, subject site, known as Liberty Plaza, is a 15,950-square-foot lot that contains a five-unit commercial building. Subject of this request is the 1,440-square-foot tenant space located at the south end of the building. Other tenants currently include Liberty Income Tax, Boost Mobile, and a COVID-19 testing site. Parking lot contains 21 spaces. Property is Zone B3 General Business. The building was constructed in 2004. 2003, the zoning board of appeals approved a series of variations to allow development of the site, including to reduce the number of required parking spaces from 24 to 19. 2006, the city council approved a special use permit request for a car title loan establishment in the tenant space at 224 South Larkin. In 2018, the city council denied a special use permit request for a staffing agency to locate in the tenant space at 232 South Larkin. Surrounding zoning land use in character, the subject property is located on the west side of Larkin Avenue, north of McDonough Street. Commercial businesses are located along both sides of Larkin Avenue in this area. The zoning and land use for the adjacent properties are as follows. To the north is B3 General Business Commercial. South is B3, again, General Business Commercial. To the east is R2, Single Family Residential with single-family homes. To the west is B3 General Business Commercial. Applicable regulations, section 47-11.2AC, special uses in the B1 Neighborhood Business District. Section 47-5.2C, criteria for issuance of a special use permit, and you can refer to the attachment. Under discussion, the petitioner Partners Personnel is a full-service national staffing company that would like to open a location in Joliet at 232 South Larkin Avenue. According to the petitioner, the company provides mostly long-term to direct higher employment opportunities with wages ranging from $17 to $25 per hour. Positions they offer require a learned skill such as forklift driving, machine operation, or office administration. Partners Personnel works on a national and local level with Costco, Harbor Freight, and Seal Logistics. They receive both temporary-to-hire and direct hire positions from their clients. Employees placed in temporary-to-hire positions are eligible for full-time regular employment. They work the required hours and meet the employer's onboarding criteria. Direct hire candidates are hired by the employer on their first day of employment. Company does not offer day labor temporary positions where employees work and are paid on a day-to-day basis. Partners Personnel provides multiple healthcare plans for eligible employees at no out-of-pocket expense. The petitioner has provided a detailed description of the company as an attachment to their application. The proposed office location would operate Monday through Friday from 8 to 5 p.m. Applicants would be seen by appointment only. The petitioner estimates that the office will see around five people per day and a total of 20 per, people per work, per week. The office will be staffed by a branch manager and two recruiters. Applicants are able to complete their application and onboarding documents electronically off-site. Zoning ordinance allows staffing companies as special uses in the B3 and B1 business districts. Therefore, the petitioner requests approval of a special use permit to allow their staffing company to locate it at the site. Under conditions, if the zoning board desires to approve this special use permit to allow a staffing company, following conditions would be included. One, that the interviewing, hiring, hiring and congregation of temporary day labor employees shall be prohibited within the facility and on the site. Two, the, or special use, termination and lapse unless a building permit or a certificate of occupancy is obtained, obtained no later than 180 days of the affected day of this ordinance, that clause. Under three, should the property be declared a public nuisance, it shall be subject to a rehearing and a possible revocation of the special use permit. And lastly, that the business shall register with the city's, city clerk's office, and that concludes our staff report.
Is the petitioner present? Am I swearing in? Do you swear your statement to be true?
I do.
Name and address for the record.
Ruby Correa, 2707 Mission Village Drive, San Diego, California.
Do you have any questions or comments for the board?
No, other than our company is really, Partners Personnel is very much about the people in the community and being able to provide a full-service staff, but long-term employment that leads to career paths. You know, just to reiterate what the report says, we don't do day labor where you get paid day-to-day. We pay on a weekly basis. We offer direct deposit, as mentioned, for, you know, a health and wellness plan, no out-of-pocket cost to the associate. They're automatically enrolled. We offer a lot more incentives to our associates that will help them kind of really transition into permanent employment with the clients that we do business with.
Okay, does anyone wish to speak in favor? Does anyone oppose? We'll close and leave the questions up to the board if there's any.
I move, we approve.
Second.
Yay.
Secretary, call the rule.
Mr. McShane?
Aye.
Mr. Noctree?
Aye.
Ms. Roar?
Aye.
Ms. Safer?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
No. That would be different. So maybe trouble.
So this one, we'll go on with a favorable vote to the city council on September 19th and 20th. Lastly, petition on the agenda, we have petition number 2022-52. The applicant is Bayes Premier Building LLC. Status of the applicant is owner. The location is 51 West Jackson Street. Request is a special use permit. Under purpose, the petitioner is requesting a special use permit to allow office uses in an I-1 light industrial zoning district located at 51 West Jackson Street. Property is located just north of the city's B2 Central Business District Zone, contains existing office uses. The RB Restricted Business District Zone is the zoning district that most commonly features business office uses and professional buildings outside of the B2 Central Business District Zone. For section 47-14.3C of the zoning ordinance, RB Restricted Business uses are prohibited in industrial zoning districts, except in the I-1 Light Industrial District as special uses when authorized by two-thirds majority of the zoning board of appeals. Sites, under site-specific information, the subject property is approximately 1.9 acres in size and has contained the existing building since, for several decades. Historically, the building was used as a facility for Commonwealth Edison. In 1995, the building was renovated to include several office spaces. Property was purchased in 19, 2019 by the current owner with the intent of expanding the amount of office space in the building by converting most of the first floor into office space. Development agreement, the current owner executed with the city in 2019 detailed several intended improvements the owner would make to the property to allow for the expanded office use in the building. Surrounding zoning land use in character, to the north is I-1 Commercial, to the south is B2 Commercial, to the east is B3 General Business, to the west is the Displanes River. Under applicable regulations, section 47-10-1, permitted uses, RB Restricted Business District. Section 47-14-3C, prohibited uses all industrial districts except as noted. Section 47-5.2C, criteria for issuance of a special use permit, you can see the attached petition. Under discussion, the approval of the requested special use permit would allow for the continued office use in an I-1 light industrial zoning district within the existing building at 51 West Jackson Street. Staff finds that the petitioner has established with clear and convincing evidence that the criteria outlined in section 47-5.2C of the city code covers the conditions that must be present for a special use permit to be issued will be met with the proposed use. The office use that is proposed throughout the building is less intense than what is generally allowed in the, within the I-1 zoning district. Subject property is just north of the city's B2 zone, comparable general business, and office facilities can be found in the surrounding area. Under conditions, if the zoning board desires to approve the requested variation, following conditions would be included, that any businesses within the building shall be registered with the city clerk's office, and two, should the property be declared a public nuisance, it shall be subject to a rehearing and possible revocation of a special use permit, and that concludes our staff report.
Okay, is the petitioner present? Swear you in? Please state your name for the board.
John Bayes. My address is 15100 West 159th Street, Homer Glen.
Okay, any comments?
No, the building, I bought the building in very disrepair. Building was probably almost ready to be tore down. I spent a lot of money, put a lot, lot into it, and I think there was a school in there right before I got it, and, but we turned it into an office, more office building. The back section, it still has 12,000 feet of industrial that were used for storage. But the building turned out really nice, and I brought, I've already moved seven or eight major companies into that building. I wasn't aware that, that we had to have a special use permit. I was just notified not too long ago that, to put resident, or commercial offices in there. But the building's like 90% full right now.
Okay, so anyone wish to speak in favor? Anyone oppose? We'll close and ask the board for any comments.
I personally want to thank you for everything you do in Joliet, for all the positive stuff you do, so thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I've invested a couple hundred million dollars in Joliet, and only on failed things, and every one of them's been a success so far.
Thank you.
Okay.
I move, we approve.
Second. Motion second to approve. Secretary, call the rule.
Mr. Noctree?
Aye.
Ms. Roar?
Aye.
Ms. Safer?
Aye.
Mr. McShane?
Aye.
Mr. Riggs?
Aye. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That's, that ends our new business portion of our agenda. Under seven, old new business, not for final action or recommendation, we have none. Under eight, public comments, this section is for anyone wanting to speak in, regarding non-agenda items, and there are a lot, a maximum of four minutes. Is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak on non-agenda items? Seeing none, we can move on to adjournment if that is your wish.
I make a motion to adjourn. Please approve by saying aye.
Aye.